It's a nice morning, it's not raining. Yet. I don't know if anybody's been out there, but our roads are a mess before you say anything, we know. Welcome, Mr. Hill. Glad to see Mayor Hill here. If we don't mind, we will now go to our invocation by Mr. John Bennett, our pledge of allegiance by Commissioner Turner. Would you bow your heads and pray with me, please? God of all creation, we come before you today to give you honor and praise, for you are truly worthy of praise. You are the source of all that is good. You're the source of all of our blessings, and we thank you for every gift that you've given us. Lord, we thank you for the opportunity to come together today. We ask for your hand to be a blessing upon this meeting. We ask that you would guide and direct our meetings so that it would be full of wisdom, productivity, and respect for one another. We thank you for helping us to accomplish our work and our goals for this day. We pray in the name of Jesus, who is the Christ. Amen.
May I join me for the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands by its nations. One lady is a god, and individual with liberty and justice for all of us.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of the minutes of July 10th and July 12th workshop and the July 12th budget workshop.
Okay, we have a proper first and a proper second.
I'll second.
Do we have a second? There we go. Proper second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so moves. Now, we have a solid waste collection and disposal that we, it's a time certain at 9:10. So, I'm gonna go ahead and move to our presentation by Mrs. Garcia. If you don't mind, Ms. Garcia.
This is a designation for the Healthy Weight Community Champions. The Pomona Park, Interlaken, and the county of Putnam County were recognized this year. This is actually one of the recognitions working with test Simpson from our Parks and Recreation that we've submitted now. This is, I believe, our fourth Healthy Weight Community Champion for Putnam County. So, we're very happy to have it again. It really symbolizes a relationship between government, the Health Department, and then community members to be able to make Putnam healthier. And so, this year, we will be doing our 5K again at the end of September. We have joined forces with the Bartram Trail Frolic, and it's becoming a large, hopefully, please, dear God, no rain, a large event for the fall that we really don't have in Putnam County. So, we're real excited about that. And it really reminding everybody to do, take your steps that you can to make Putnam County healthier as we go. So, that's important. I also want to just mention really briefly, we're also doing, in light of that, there is, lupus is an autoimmune disease that occurs more and more on the rise. There are over 16,000 new cases per year in the states, and there are only 15 rheumatologists through the state, the north central part of Florida. So, in conjunction with the University of Florida and AHEC, we will be doing a training for physicians and anybody else that would like to come on August the 6th at the Health Department. So, I will pass these flowers, I'll give them to here, and I will let them pass them One of the things that got us to the Healthy Weight Community Champions for Putnam is our breastfeeding rates for Putnam County when I arrived were below 50%. I'm very proud that the rates today have gone over 76% for breastfeeding moms in Putnam County. And next week, we will be celeb, and August the 1st through August the 6th, that week will be Breastfeeding Awareness Month and Breastfeeding Week. So, we will celebrate that as well. So, we're excited to have you, and I would love to present you this plaque, Mr. Chair.
Present us?
And I'll get a picture with all of you.
Okay.
That's a must.
You're welcome. We're glad that Putnam County has continued to hold on. We lost two of our members this year that didn't, didn't get it this year. So, we're glad that Putnam County was able to get it. I'm gonna stand up.
Yeah, oh yeah, we're gonna have pictures. But we do wanna appreciate everyone that's involved with this.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Short person.
Short person.
Thank you.
And we will, Mrs. Sharon Teen with the UF IFAS program, if you would do your next presentation, we appreciate it.
Good morning, Sharon Teen, Putnam County Extension Director with UF IFAS. Mine is really more of an invitation and an announcement rather than a presentation, but I have left invitations in each of your mailboxes next door. I'm pleased to announce that the Putnam County 4-H Livestock Judging Team has qualified at the State Livestock Judging Contest to complete, compete nationally at the American Royal in Kansas City, Missouri in October. These 4-H members from Putnam County will represent the entire state of Florida at this prestigious event. The livestock judging team members include Clayton Brahman, Jarrett Kelly, Emily Lands, Abby Whittington, Dathan Guthrie, Kayla Smith, and Bryce Bernard. Livestock judging is a science-based art that requires student judges to evaluate animals based on traits for market and breeding. The livestock evaluators are able to compare logically, decide independently, solve problems rationally, think critically, and communicate effectively. You can easily see how these skills will translate into their daily lives as they grow into be responsible adults. In order to prepare for this national contest, these youth and their coach have spent many months attending a variety of contests in camps in South Carolina, Northwest Georgia, Oklahoma State University, Hardy County, and most recently, the Big Three Contest in Steelwater, Oklahoma, which had over 1,600 participants, and one of these team members placed first in oral reasons out of 1,600 youth.
Wow.
There are plans to attend several more contests in final preparation for the American Royal in October. You can tell we're very proud of these young people. In order to help with the expenses of these vast array of judging experiences, the team will hold a fundraiser dinner and auction on August 4th at the Putnam County Fairgrounds' Expo Building. There will be a delicious steak dinner available for a donation of your choice. There's no charge for the dinner. They've gotten all of the food donated by very generous donors, followed by a silent and a live auction. These youth need to raise $30,000 to defray the expense of all of these experiences that they've had. Some examples of the auction items include guided fishing trips in Cedar Key, St. Augustine, and Palatka, a variety of animal-related services, spa baskets, passes to the alligator farm, a commercial market calf, and a large variety of baskets that will be valued at over $100 each. So, as I indicated, I've left invitations in your basket net box, mailboxes next door, and if you're available on August the 4th at 6:00 PM, we hope that you can come to the Putnam County Fairgrounds and support these youth in their efforts.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions?
Yes, I could, Mr. Chairman, what time is that?
Um, let's see, Commissioner liable, it's at 6 o'clock.
Okay.
So, it's Saturday, August 4th, and you each have one of these in your box next door. And I have extras for anybody in the audience that would like one. They are hoping, they're preparing for 300 people. So, anyway, any other questions?
Let's give them a warm round of applause.
I agree.
That is, that is tough trying to do that judging.
Number one.
Yes. At this time, the Honorable Mrs. Myers, if you would do your presentation.
Good morning. Good morning.
I know they're to sit on the back row, but the folks with me don't. It's delightful to be here, Commissioners, Mr. Suggs with County Administrator, and also Kirk Courtz, Tim Smith, and the great staff of Putnam County that are here. Yes, I am your Putnam County Tax Collector, and we are here to celebrate longevity. We're here to celebrate folks who care about our community. We're here to celebrate why we live in Putnam County, relationships. So, specifically, I'm going to actually introduce the manager of our tax administration, who is Rose Wilkinson, who, by the way, is in her 24th year of serving Putnam County in the Tax Collector's Office, but she's even going to be recognizing our Bonnie Thomas for a more celebratory anniversary than that one.
Rose.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Rose, and we're here to celebrate Bonnie with her 30 years of service to the county.
You can't go home, Bonnie.
Bonnie began her career with the Tax Collector's Office as a title clerk in 1988. Bonnie has served in many positions in her career with the Putnam County Tax Collector's Office. She served as title clerk, tag, and title clerk, assigned to the mobile unit, which was a very long time ago, if some of you can remember, long before the branch offices opened up in Interlaken and Crescent City. She served as head cashier and as an inventory specialist, and is currently assigned to the Tax Administration Division as a title clerk or a tax administration clerk. May of 1997, Bonnie earned her designation as a Certified Tax Collector Assistant by the Florida Department of Revenue, and she's currently in the drop program, predicted to retire in July of 2020.
You're not excited a bit, are you?
That's not a reflection on how much she loves.
That's right. That's right.
Reflection on how much she loves her grandchildren, I believe.
That's right.
Can you just help me thank her for?
Yes.
I also want to recognize, we have Nicole Buckles with us, who is in the Tax Administration. She's here to make sure we get a picture so we can put it on Facebook, so please join us in front of the dais, Commissioners, so that Bonnie is recognized.
All right, squeeze in everybody.
Thank you. I would like to say that I've had the pleasure of working under four tax collectors.
Pleasure. Pleasure.
Probably going out the last one. Thank you, guys.
So, if you'll indulge me for just a moment, I recognize that we have another long-term coming next. It's, those are the reasons we love where we live, and I'm gonna share a little story that Bonnie shared. Bonnie's part of our morning crew. There's a group of us that arrive about 7:30, and we start our day laughing, which is a great way to start our day, as I'm sure many of you do. But today's morning crew was talking about, she said, "I had a customer yesterday who kept staring at me, and he's a young man, and finally, he said something like, 'Gosh, I know you.'" Well, he's known, she's been serving him for over 30 years, because as young as she is, she still had a life before us, which was First Fedro, and she remembered, he remembered seeing her at First Fedro, and then his entire adult life at our office. So, those are the kinds of stories that make us love where we live, and I know you all hear them every day, and I'm sure. So, Bonnie, we are delighted, we're not delighted you're leaving us, that brain drain is tough, but we're delighted to have had you with us this long.
That's right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The only thing we, my voice carries, so the only thing we really need to do is keep in tune with those after we leave, 'cause see, they're still, they see me in the grocery store, Walmart, and say, "I bought a B in call," or, you know, "I wanna shift for a minute, we still, my driver's license are expiring, what do I need?" So, now I can say, "Call the office."
That's good.
Yes.
No doubt, I'm nervous. Let me, uh.
No doubt.
Okay, we will move to our 9:10 surge public hearing. Oh, you wanna go ahead and do that?
Yeah.
Let's hold off on that. I've just been corrected, let's just move ahead to Ms. Stella Brown with the library. Go ahead and do the recognition, recognition for Ms. Marilyn.
Good morning, Stella Brown, interim Library Director, Putnam County Library Assistant. Today, we're here to recognize Marilyn Metz, I got that. Today, we're here to recognize Marilyn Metz for over 30 years of service, even though it says she started in 1988. Actually, we came from the city of Palatka prior to 1988. So, we go way back. Marilyn has held three positions in Putnam County Library Assistant. She was actually hired as a Library Clerk and was later promoted to Library Assistant 2, and later promoted to the, her final destination, which was Branch Manager of the Interlaken Library, which is where she resides until 28th, no, the 31st, the 31st. Marilyn and I go way back, like way, way back, like before I had kids, and when we both had a head full of hair, you know, and stuff like that. Over the years, we've endured some struggles, but we overcame them. We had some likes, some dislikes. It then caused inner bitterness between the two of us. We've learned how to overcome and use our dislikes and our likes to benefit the Putnam County Library System as well as the residents of Putnam County. Marilyn cries a lot. I'm mean. They say I'm mean. I'm not mean. I'm firm. I had four boys, she didn't have any kids, so she didn't get that training. But what I wanna say about Marilyn is Marilyn is a hard worker, she's a strong-willed person. She will go far and beyond to call and do to assist anyone, whether they're resident of Putnam County or outside of Putnam County. She will call me in the wee-wee hours. She will call me in the early, early morning hours. But it was always an emergency. She didn't just call just to be calling. She always had a reason to call. And with Marilyn in the Interlaken area, she's built that relationship that I have yet to build. I live in Interlaken, but I drive through Interlaken. I don't do the grocery stores and stuff like that. That's my husband cup of tea. So, when I go places, they wanna know who I am, but when Marilyn go places, "Oh, hi, that's me." I'm like, "I live here too." Marilyn has reached out to many, many young people in the community, especially our little children, which people don't realize the importance of getting those kids when they're young and bringing them up in a library where they learn the value and the resources that the Putnam County Library System has to offer. So, with that being said, Marilyn, she's done an outstanding job. I have nothing negative to say about her. The only thing I have to say negative is that she let me have four kids and she never had one. But we, we have a relationship, and Bill might as well come up, 'cause he's been part of the Library System as.
Where's Bill?
He's been part of the Library System for over 30 years as well. And what I wanna say about Putnam County, you know, you hear so much negative about Putnam County, what Putnam County does not do, what Putnam County has done a lot. Because when we came into the Library System, I had a beat-up car, Marilyn had a beat-up truck, we helped each other out, because that's the type of relationship we've had. Over the years, the Lord has blessed both of us through Putnam County employment to be able to get decent V-hilcos and a decent place to stay. So, with that being said, I'm quite sure Marilyn has her story to tell. I could go on and on and on, but I won't. But what I wanna say to the general public is stop beating the counter down that you live in and start building it up.
That's right.
Stop complaining and start doing it. And that's what Marilyn and myself has done in the last 30 years. And with that being said, I'm gonna end my part and give the mic to Marilyn.
Thank you, everyone. It's been a pleasure working for Putnam County for as long as I have. I made a lot of friends. I'm sad to be leaving, but I won't be missing any of my friends, because everybody is considered my friend, and thank you so much for giving me the opportunity to work for this wonderful county. I'll never forget it. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you toward your service.
With that being said, we have a plaque here that's being given by Putnam County, and it says, "Presented to Marilyn Metz for over 30 years of dedicated services to the residents of Putnam County."
Good deal. Come on, Stella, you gotta be in there. Stella, you wanna get in this?
Sure.
Bill, did you see that? I hugged her twice in one day.
Right. Did you get that? At this time, I'm gonna take a three-minute recess. We will come back, and we'll have our solid waste collection and our public hearing. Okay, we'll now open for our solid waste collection and disposal. I can't hear you. Please take a seat, please. Quiet down in the back there, Matthew.
We will now open up for our solid waste collection and disposal district. We have a time certain at 9:10, which we have gone past, for a public hearing for solid waste assessments and user fees for fiscal year 2018, 2019. And Mr. Hill, do you wanna comment on this?
Yes, we can. No, sir.
Okay. Mr. Suggs, exactly who wants to comment on these user fees?
Mr. Chairman, to start with, I'll go ahead and offer a motion to accept the minutes from the July 24th.
Second. Okay. Well, we have a proper first and a proper second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I think the record needs to be pointed out that we're missing our mayor from Crescent City and the mayor from Interlaken.
Well, that is true. We are missing our mayors, Mr. Hill. Well, I guess if we have nothing else, then we're all.
Well, you have to open it for the public.
Okay. All right, so I guess we'll open it up for.
There we go.
Yes, ma'am?
Thank you.
I'll take it if no one else will.
Okay.
By county ordinance, the board is required to establish by resolution the solid waste special assessment and user fees prior to the beginning of each fiscal year. Based upon current engineering estimates for new cell development, onsite leachate treatment costs, and other ongoing landfill development and monitoring requirements, the landfill operations portion of the solid waste special assessment and user fee as applicable will be increased from 182 to 183. Due to fluctuations in recycling costs, the recycling component will be decreased from 39 to 38 per household. This will result in a combined cost of 221 per year for each household in the county for disposal and recycling, which is the same amount as the previous year. Lost my place. And represents the total solid waste assessment and user fee as applicable for the households in Crescent City and Palatka, which provide their own solid waste collection. For those households outside the municipalities of Palatka and Crescent City, there will be a collection fee decrease from 111 to 110, which will result in a total annual assessment or user fee as applicable of 331, which is $1 lower than the current charge of 332. Tipping, and staff recommends that you adopt the resolution setting the special assessments for fiscal year 2018-19.
Good deal. Okay, thank you very much. At this time, we'll have public comment for or against. Mr. Tim, did you wanna speak on this, or did you, okay. All right, so, do we have any public comment?
Mr. Chairman, seeing no comments, I move approval of this resolution.
Second.
Okay, proper first, proper second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any discussion? Okay, we'll close that. All right, that will move us to, unless I'm out of line here, to the appeal for the decision made by the solid waste adjustment for Mr. DeGraff.
Mr. Chairman, I'll go ahead and start this off. The county ordinance provides that, that assessments can be removed from a particular property if they. if they meet certain requirements. This matter came before the solid waste adjustment committee on April eighteenth to request that the assessments be removed from two properties. That was denied by the solid waste adjustment committee for both of those properties, and this is an appeal of that decision to the full solid waste board. Basically, the reason for the denial is the language that is contained within the county ordinance, which states that the special assessments are to be imposed against owners of all residential units as defined in section thirty-four dash one, which are deemed by the county property appraiser as being assessable for solid waste purposes on the January one prior to the fiscal year in which the annual collection assessment is imposed, regardless of whether such property is occupied on such date, and that was the basis for the denial. Mr. DeGraff is here to present his position on this appeal, and this is a public hearing.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. DeGraff, if you'll give your name and your address.
My name's Dennis DeGraff. I reside at one-ninety-four Reeves Avenue in... I reside at one-ninety-four Reeves Avenue in Inlacon, Florida. My initial request was not for two properties. It was just for one property, the property of one-ninety-five Reeves Avenue. I'm not... I was not notified of the meeting, the previous meeting, therefore I was not able to attend. I called the county and asked about what it would... what was the requirements to have the solid waste removed from the property. I had a county appraisal... appraiser come out and look at the property, and at that time I was informed that I need... needed to have the commercial power removed from the property and have that drop rolled up and removed from the property completely. I did so. I called Clay Electric, I believe, on November twenty-second of the previous year of two thousand seventeen. They came out, removed the power, but they did not roll the drop up. So, I called them back again. They came out, I believe, the week after Thanksgiving and actually removed the drop. So, in my... in my mind, at that time, I was... I had met the requirements that was set forth, that I was told about from the county appraiser. When I received the letter, I noticed that it was for two properties, which is one-ninety-four, which is my primary residence. I'd have no expectations of the solid waste being removed from that property. It's my primary residence. The other property is... it's just a mobile home on a piece of land. I use it for storage. There's no one living there. There's no one that will ever live there. Now that I have removed the power, there's certainly no way anyone could live there, and that's why I'm requesting... I requested the appeal, just to clarify that it was for one piece of property and not two pieces of property.
Okay, that does make a little bit of sense. Yes, sir, go ahead.
If I could, counsel, could I call on you to give us a description of the criteria of having the meter removed? Does that qualify for non-collection of the solid waste fees?
No, not in my opinion. Still residential improved property, whether or not there's power there.
Okay, Mr. DeGraff, where did you get this information that these... what was that?
I do not recall the gentleman's name, but he is the county appraiser for the Western... Western Putnam County, county appraiser.
Okay.
And it's been over a year since I spoke with him.
I see. If I could point out, it used to be the case that occupancy was a criteria in prior ordinance, but that's not the case with the current ordinance, which has been in place for a number of years. Okay, thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. DeGraff.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I have a question too for staff, but based on that, hasn't it been the practice of what Mr. DeGraff is saying, that the property appraiser office would tell people to go out and do this, and that would relieve them of a fee coming up? Wasn't really based on occupancy?
I don't know if... is somebody from the property appraiser here to testify in that matter? I can't testify in that regard.
I mean, that's... yeah, okay. But it seems like Mr. DeGraff did what he was told to do, maybe not by this entity, but a county entity who told him, "If you do this, this, and this, then this will be done," and I think in good faith he did what he was supposed to have done, but he might not have came to the right board to do it, and that looks to be like that might be the case. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, let me ask a couple of questions here. Did you have the power meter removed or just the line to the house?
Everything was removed.
Okay, so your power pole was gone?
The... no, the power poles there, they took the meter.
They took the meter off of the wall?
The... off the pole, and then the drop that comes from the transformer to that power pole was rolled up and attached back to the pole.
Okay. Okay. As I did work with the property appraisers office, that was our rule of thumb, is if before January first, that power was removed, then the solid waste bill would have been taken off.
And that's what I was told.
Yeah, and unless that's changed. I haven't been there in years, but that was... that was the understanding, because that means the house is unlivable, would not be generating trash. That's really about it. Also, I don't know if you've talked to the appraisers office. I know you're saying that you're using that for storage. As long as it's functional, just to tell you that, as long as your bathroom is functional, I don't think that'll fly as storage. They're gonna still assess you as property.
Well, the...
That's the way it used to be.
That property does not have a well. It's own well.
It's a shared well?
Yes.
Well, even at that point, the home could be used as residential in the way it used to be, as long as it was able to be functional, then it can be... it may not be what you use it for, but what it can be used for is the way they do it. Mr. Turner?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I think that we need to be very careful here, and the reason we need to be careful is because while it did say at one time in our ordinance that you could... you could give this money back or relieve them of this... of having to pay this money, our current ordinance does not allow it. Now, that's the advice we got from our attorney when we had the solid waste adjustment committee board that we went to, and it was pretty cut and dried once he gave us a presentation. So, if he could maybe take just a minute and reiterate what he said earlier, and if I understand correctly, that our current ordinance does not allow us to just disconnect the power and move on.
That's correct. That's correct. The current... or the ordinance was changed a number of years back, and, you know, I appreciate the historical information provided, but the current ordinance does not allow consideration of whether it's livable. I mean, it could be... it's a mobile home, is what the testimony is. It may not have a roof or windows or power or a toilet or anything. It's still a residential improved structure. And the only way to have that assessment removed, according to the ordinance, is literally to remove the structure itself.
Okay.
And I would also point out, we don't... we don't have anybody here from the property appraisers office, nor do we have anything from them in the record indicating that it's not a residential improved structure and therefore not assessable. So, we really... we have no evidence to support that.
As we see it, we have to stay with the way the statute is. As far as I'm concerned, if you got something from the appraisers office that said that that's not the way it is, then you'd have a presentation to bring to us, but other than that, I think we're having to stay with the...
Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I'll ask legal counsel if he... do you have anything in writing? If he had something in writing from them, where would we stand with that? Because it looks like he's been misinformed.
Well, if we... if there was something from the property appraiser that says this does not fall within the definition of a residentially improved structure, then that would meet the ordinance.
Right.
And to finish, is there a way... I've understood where you're coming from, and I agree with you there, for whomever or the employees to be informed of what the current ordinance is now, so somebody in the future won't be misinformed also?
Yeah. Again, and I don't know... I don't know what's coming out of the property appraisers office.
Okay. I just... I wanna throw in here that it was standard practice. If he had called our office back then, we would have gone out and we would have taken new pictures showing that there was no... you know, that it was not habitable, and there it would have been changed before this paperwork was ever sent to the Department of Revenue. Yes, sir, Mr. Harvey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. What I'm hearing, though, Mr. Manning, basically, is our new ordinance says if it's... if it's a residential structure, could be a block home, could be anything on the property that was a residential unit, no matter what you call it today, call it a storage shed, call it what you want, it's still a residential unit.
Correct.
That was on the property, whether it be a mobile home, a concrete block building, a gym altar, it doesn't matter.
Correct.
So, if at one time it was a residential... so, the only way for Mr. DeGraff to find relief is to remove that mobile home off the property.
Correct, and then they have the property appraiser come out, and then they'll indicate in their records, at a minimum, that it is no longer a residential structure on that property.
Is there any... and maybe this is above... is there any way to turn a residential unit into a storage structure? Maybe...
You know, again, I think at that point, that that would have to be the property appraiser would have to go out and make that determination. I don't have an answer to that.
That wouldn't come from our building department. That might say, you know, "You dropped this down. You removed this. It's no longer..."
They may work with the property appraiser, but ultimately, the property appraiser would have to... would have to make that change based upon whatever evidence they look at.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Manning. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Turner?
I'd also like to bring it to everybody's attention that you can't turn a trailer into a storage unit. That's against code.
That's correct, right.
So, you know, I understand what he's doing, but he's also... even if he went that route, he can't put the trailer on there for storage, so he's gonna have to remove the trailer. But until he does, it's a residential unit. That's what the code... we went through this in solid adjustment. I mean, some of these, we clearly see there's no one living there, and we don't feel like there's someone living there, but that's not what the code says, the code... or ordinance says. If you find that somebody's not living there, that you can grant them no garbage assessment. That just isn't what it says. It says, "If it's a residential unit, you have to charge the assessment." It's not... we wanted to do some of this in ours, but we felt our hand was tied. The solid waste adjustment committee, our hands were tied because of this particular language in the ordinance that our attorney was telling us, so that's the reason we didn't do some of this. So, I don't see how he could turn it into a storage and keep it and get the property appraiser to allow it when it's against code to use a mobile home for storage. So, I just, you know, it's...
It's good information.
I just think we're setting a bad precedence if we do this.
Yep. Good information there. Do we have any other questions?
Oh, I'm ready to move forward.
Okay.
This is a public hearing, so I should invite anybody else with an interest in one way or the other before rendering a decision?
Yes, sir. Okay. We have no comments up here, okay. So, do we have any public comment for or against? Seeing none. Okay. Did you have a comment, Durham? No, okay. Alright, do we have a... Are you looking at me for a motion? I'm trying to see what we wanna do here. Mr. DeGraff is real regret. We... you know, based on our current ordinance, that we'll have to... I'm gonna motion that we not accept your request for the return of the solid waste assessment. We just have no wiggle room on this, sir.
I understand. I understand. I only wish that I'd have been informed properly.
Yes, sir.
Then I would not. Now, I don't know if I'm gonna be able to get the power reattached to the property.
Well, Mr. Turner is correct. In our ordinance concerning mobile homes and storage, he is... he's correct on that. They can't be used for that.
I understand.
Yes, sir. Okay. Alright, so we have a proper first and a proper second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any discussion? Okay.
Commissioner Pickens?
Mayor Hill?
No, Mayor Hill.
Oh, Mayor Hill, okay.
Was there a vote?
Yes.
Oh, sorry.
Yes, sir.
We didn't hear it. Let's look at... Sorry, so moves. Roll call?
You wanna do roll call?
I thought it was unanimous.
It was unanimous, wasn't it?
It was unanimous.
Yeah.
Yes.
It was unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, though...
Yes, sir.
May I say?
You can.
Mr. DeGraff's last statement kinda touched me there. Now, he doesn't know if he can get that back on.
That's... that's... Mr. Chairman, or Mr. Commissioner Harvey, I'm glad you mentioned that, because that's what I was gonna talk about.
John, raise your hand back there. That's our building official back here. Why don't you get with him and have that conversation, okay?
Thank you very much.
Alright, sorry about that. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And that will conclude our solid waste collection and disposal.
Thank you, Mr. Hill, Mayor Hill, for your time here.
Thank you.
Okay, at this time...
Give time for Tim to come back up.
I know you are. You were doing good. I didn't know. He was in high-speed pursuit. Okay, at this time, we're gonna move to public comment, and you'll come up... Re-convene the BLCC meeting? Oh, I thought I did. I'll convene it again. And we will go with our regular scheduled board meeting. I have a card here from Mr. Tim. Anyone who wants to come up and speak, please give your name and your address, and try to limit to three minutes.
Thank you, sir.
You gotta give one to her, too. Okay, thank you.
She's trained me well.
This is your first time, I know.
You're gonna have to cheer.
I'll hand this extra one to you when we're done, Chip. Hi, I'm Tim Hoteling. I'm from San Mateo. I've had a few medical things that took a bunch of my energy out. You guys sorta took all of the wind out of my sails here in the last couple of weeks with this mandate that you send Mr. Suggs to negotiate for garbage, set his own rates, do whatever he wants. No basic requirement that you report back, which I'm sure you will. As I said on this paper, the concept of... we have our expenses paid at the landfill, so therefore it won't have any more expense, so we should get any other kind of trash we can get and fill it up, and all of that will be profit. Sounded like a really good idea, till I talked to a local contractor that said, "But I just paid forty, eighty dollars or whatever, and now I'm gonna be subsidizing the guy from the next county." He didn't think that was really fun. My... that's not really my issue, but that's the issue that you guys will face when you get out there and have your "I wanna be re-elected" discussions. My issue is that I've expended thousands of hours, some of us, in trying to turn to get this ship of state going down the road that it's going now, and it's like really joyous. I've given you some examples on the back, like when I got here, the previous landfill guy was getting himself a bass boat every year or two, courtesy of the vendor. courtesy of the vendor. I provided the example of, um, sorry, this chemo moment again. The DPW director that if you got, uh, he got free drinks and, and, uh, a lot of contributions to his nonprofit, and even though he didn't know how to build a road, he was granted a, a, uh, road building, several road building projects, even though the, the guys that know how to build roads that work for the county said, it's the worst thing I've ever seen in thirty years. And Commissioner Harvey's well acquainted with all the aggravation there. And then I put on the example of these, well, I don't know, these pictures that were around, and how because of the purchasing ordinance, there was only one person that could recommend everything and, and make a purchase. And he was the only person that was authorized to investigate as the propriety of any of the actions. There was no trail, there's no transparency, there was no nothing, and, and now we're, and everything was going good, you guys pass this ordinance that mandates Mr. Suggs go out and find some trash, but you don't say, we have these parameters within this thing, you don't, don't peg it to anything, this engineering study we just heard about, about how much, uh, uh, the landfill's worth, or the tipping fee should be. There's not much of anything, there's no reporting.
Mr. Tim, I, I hate to, but you, you have rung well over your time limit. Mr. Suggs, is there a possibility that you could sit with him and kind of explain how this?
Just, just so you do know, we have had our, uh, we, we had some faults in the past, and we have cleared those up, but it's, as, unless there's something I'm not seeing-
And that's exactly what I'm saying, Mr. Goddard.
And we worked on it.
I'm saying that we've been going down, doing really, really good.
Thank you.
And this really, really concerns me that, that there's some slippage, and that you need to have the checks and balances.
We're not gonna get into, I don't want to get into a long thing here, but we do want to sit with you, and I want to kind of clear this up with you, or-
Before you sit down, Tim, Mr. Tim,
Sir?
Before you sit down, I'd like to talk with you-
Well, let's let Mr. Turner do it.
If you don't mind, Mr.-
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Um, Mr. Tim, um, I can assure you that, uh, that there's gonna be no waste taken by this county. Let me finish, please. I didn't interrupt you.
Yes, sir.
Okay, that there'll be no waste taken by this county until the rate study that has been ordered by Jones Edmonds is completed and brought in. That's something that Mr. Suggs insisted on, because he does not want anybody to be able to say that he took garbage for less money than what the rate study shows that we can take it for. So, as far as somebody from out of town, if everything goes like it's supposed to, they won't be paying more than, than, uh, somebody from somewhere else either. That's the goal here, to get everybody on a same, on a level playing field. We've got to start somewhere, and it'll start after the rate study is done, that's been ordered by Jones Edmonds.
That's wonderful, and I appreciate that, and I have faith in that, but as I say, yeah, my concern isn't for you, my concern isn't for when Mr. Suggs is here. My concern is that these ordinance are, ordinances are for down the road. There were a, a lot of good people that started out really good, that probably weren't so good when we had to force them out. And, and perhaps that ordinance was a little premature. And, uh, that's all. I just want you all to, to realize that problems develop a little by little. And, and you need to keep the focus on, on, uh, so that the systems, so that locks keep honest people honest, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tim. Okay, and, and Mr. Tim, I do want to tell you that we do appreciate it. I know sometimes you don't think we do, but we do appreciate it because we could overlook something, but honestly, this commission is doing its very best to be open and do what's right for this county. There, there's nothing hidden, and as far as giving Mr. Suggs some authority, that was because he needed it to make a decision then, but as far as the final decision, that would be based on the five of us. So, uh, then it's, uh, then it needs to be looked at a little bit different, but that's the way I understand it. Mr. Suggs, did you like?
No, sir, I just, again, you asked a question about sitting down with Mr. Ho, and, and as you know, your county administrator has an open-door policy.
Yes, sir.
We can schedule an appointment anytime.
Honestly, if, it, it wouldn't hurt if you'd take the time to, to sit in there, and, and we'd be more than happy to go through it with you. And if there is, uh, uh, something that you're not seeing. Okay, thank you. All right, any other public comment? Seeing none, I'll close that portion, and we'll move to the consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to pull item E.
Yes, sir.
And that's all.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Harvey?
I wanted item E also. And J, real quickly, on J.
J? Okay. Mr. Pickens?
Uh, item E.
Okay, E also, and-
I have none today, sir.
Okay, none. Okay, looks like E is, is what I felt would be our, one we'd like to discuss. And Mr. Turner, since you started that one, I'll let you go ahead.
On behalf of you, Mr. Chairman, um, I was noticing while reviewing this that the, uh, the, the, the selection committee, uh, went through a thorough review and prob, and probably did a good job with the review, but there was only two points difference between the top two, uh, people that they were asking for this. Now, I understand the one we've been using for many, many years was that no one seems to have any problem with them whatsoever. And so, we're, and their local firm. And we're thinking about taking that local firm and giving their contract to a Georgia firm over two points. Mr. Chairman, ever since I've been here, I've said, I've said that I think we should do everything in our power, even if it costs us money to trade local. In this particular instance, it's not gonna cost us a dime to stay local. I, uh, I, I do not, I am, I'm not prepared to accept the recommendation of the committee and send this work to Atlanta, or to Georgia, wherever it is, instead of keeping it local right here in our community with a company that, that, that the judges are happy with. So, that's my comment to start it out.
Okay, Mr. Harvey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I concur with Commissioner Turner. You know, we've, we've all been focused on local companies and local growth, and our neighbors, and our friends. And to support the idea of going outside the county for these services is not in my, in my idea of shopping locally. Uh, so Commissioner, I just wanted to concur with Commissioner Turner, and also thank the, uh, our current provider for the job well done that they've been doing.
Okay, thank you.
I agree with Commissioner Turner and Commissioner Harvey, um, that looking at the evaluation, that there's only a few points difference, uh, between our current, um, supplier and then, uh, the one that's being recommended. And, and I also agree that we should, uh, keep it local if possible. Um, so I'm not prepared to move that forward. I, I do have a question. Anybody that was on this, uh, evaluation team, I, I understand that maybe the Judicial Correction Services, they are, um, the, uh, the company that handles this in maybe some of the other counties. Uh, give me a little update on maybe how are they performing, um, compared to? Because I, I also talked to two different individuals who are aware of how the current, um, company, uh, does business, and they're extremely happy. So I was just wondering, I think Volusia County and maybe even Flagler uses this other firm, is that correct?
Yes, Commissioner.
Okay.
Hi, there, my-
Yes.
I'll introduce myself, thank you. My name is Shirley Olson. I'm the Director of Court Services for Court Administration of the Seventh Circuit. I'm here on behalf of the Trial Court Administrator, Mark Weinberg, today, who sends his regards and, and his apologies for not being able to be here. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
I, I guess I can ask any question, may not be able to answer it, right? Um, the services provided by the Judicial Correction Service in the other counties, are, are they satisfied with, with their, um-
They are generally satisfied, and they find when they do have concerns, and I'm sure this happens in most counties, if they have concerns, they address it with the provider, who usually is quick to remedy any situation that arises.
Okay, thank you, that's all I have.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I would ask, um, since this is, um, the procurement, um, there may be some statutory, um, limitations on, on, on the choice that you ultimately make here today, so I would ask that you could, um, continue this matter until I can look into the statute further. Shouldn't take me that long.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Um, I move, uh, that we, uh, move this, uh, to counsel for further investigation to be determined later.
Okay.
I, I would be happy to second that motion, but if Commissioner Labble will give me a moment to make sure that's what counsel's looking for. Uh, do you want us to table this, uh, counsel, or do you want it to a time certain, like the next meeting, and give you time to look at it, and then bring it back then? Because we can't just let this contract dangle past the due date.
No, I'm not asking for another date. I'll just, give me a little bit of time here this morning as we continue on, and I'll, I'll look at it right now.
Could we table it till later in the meeting?
No, yes, yeah. I can, I can move our, if it's okay, I can, um,
We'll just come back to you.
If Mr. Labble will change his motion to table it till later in the meeting?
My motion had no time parameters in it, so I will add that.
I'll second that motion.
All right, well, in that case, we can move ahead with our consent agendas excluding E. Okay, all right, no problem.
Very well.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Harvey, you, uh, you wanted to bring up about the fair authority.
Yes, I do. I want to thank the item J, the Putnam County Fair Authority, um, has put together a tremendous opportunity for the fairgrounds over there, and, um, I think they deserve to be thanked and applauded for their effort. And also, I'd like to, uh, ask them, easy, and you're in the audience today. Um, Mr. Newball could not be here today, but, um, I would love to see if we can't be a, more of a partner in the future, very near future on this item. And, uh, that's all I have to say, Mr. Chairman. Thank you very much for the time.
All right. We just want to thank you for what you do at the fairgrounds. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, I move the consent, uh, agenda items A, B, C, D, F, G, H, I, J, uh, to pass, please.
Okay. All right, so we have a proper first, a proper second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous. Any discussion? All right. So, our consent agenda, so moves. Uh, we'll move to our presentation of our tentative budget.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Uh, commissioners will go ahead this morning if we could. I'll turn the, uh, presentation over to our Budget Officer, Miss Stacy Papel.
You have before you two agenda items. If you'd like, I can read the entire agenda item to you, or not, your pleasure.
Mr. Chairman?
How about I summarize?
Summarize.
Summarize. A title-only is fine with me.
We presented the budget in workshop last week. Uh, we've brought the budget back to you with the same proposed millage, you know, maximum millage rate. Uh, the only change is a tweak in the fleet fund. Uh, they were just to reserves coming forward and reserves ending with. And that difference is three thousand five hundred and two dollars. The first agenda item requires no action. We just are presenting the budget. The second agenda item, uh, asks that first, by motion, you accept the tentative budget and set the proposed millage rate. And then secondly, set date and time certain, the first and second public hearing, two separate motions.
Okay. Okay. Public hearings, uh, counsel.
Oh, okay, there, there.
And the proposed millage is nine point six six two two.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I'd be happy to move, uh, the first action forward. Um, and again, thank you to staff, as we indicated, um, the last meeting on a, a fine job in lowering taxes and, and bringing our millage rate back down.
It's a living, breathing project. We hope to lower it further.
Yes.
Uh, no promises.
And we hope you move it further. But by that, I motion to accept the tentative budget and set the proposed millage rates.
Second. A proper first and a proper second.
Please, please state the amount of the millage rate in the motion.
Which is nine-
Point six six two two.
Well, it's my motion, so I'll have to do it. Nine point six six two two, thank you.
Thank you, just caution.
I second that, Mr. Chairman.
Trying to help out.
You wanted to move that quick.
We have a proper first and a proper second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It's also unanimous.
Mr. Chairman?
Thank you.
Yes. I'd like to by motion set the date, time, and place for the tentative budget hearing as Monday, September tenth, at five, oh, two thousand eighteen, at five oh five P.M. in this boardroom. Uh, and that will set the time and place for the final budget hearing of adoption of the final budget millage rate as Tuesday, September twenty fifth, two thousand eighteen, at five oh five, in this boardroom.
I'll second.
Okay, all right, so we have a proper motion for Monday, September tenth, at five oh five.
Had to be Monday because the school board took Tuesday.
Oh, okay. All right, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Again, unanimous.
Thank you.
And I'm gonna take this moment to tell you, thank you. You and Matt have done fantastic, and the staff,
because they realized what we were against, and it's just, it's, I, I'm impressed, very impressed,
and very pleased with what got taken care of.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Um, also, uh, I was gonna mention another discussion, but we went straight to voting, and I didn't get a chance, so I will now.
You go right ahead.
Um, I, I think we need to, to not miss the fact here that, that we did lower taxes two point oh three percent, I believe it was. Um, and on top of that, we don't have any money from our reserves used to balance this budget, which has been the first time in many, many years that they haven't used the, the reserves to balance the budget. So, I think we need to also just point that out at every opportunity that we can, that we, we not only balanced the budget, we also reduced taxes, and we also didn't use the reserves to balance the budget.
And may I say, we also increased our reserves potentially, so, yes, it's, we've, y'all have worked very hard. Let me say, Mr. Chairman, while I have the floor-
Yes, sir, you have it.
You've, you've gotten the seal of approval of my mother-in-law, Dottie Roundtree, who read the budget and said this was the easiest thing she's ever read, and she appreciates that.
Oh, I think that, that goes to Matt, if you're talking about the PowerPoint, that's Matt.
She was excited when she got a chance to read.
Yes, sir. Matt did it where we could understand it. Any other comments? Uh, yeah, we are, I know everybody here is just thrilled that we did get through that. All right, um, we will now, we can move to Mr.-
Let's wait just a moment. I hear counsel coming through the back door, Mr. Chairman, if you would.
Counsel's here.
Counsel, are you prepared?
You gonna tell us how much trouble we're gonna get in when we do what we're gonna do anyhow?
There's, there's no limitation, um, in the statute on, on making that choice, um, or in the ordinance. Uh, this isn't, you know, based upon price. Um, so, you can go ahead and, and decide as you wish on which provider you, you want to award to. I would caution, um, or ask, I guess, ask is the more appropriate, uh, if any of you were lobbied by any of these firms prior to this decision today.
I was.
How would we be lobbied, like?
Contacted by any of them?
No, I haven't, no.
Okay, Mr. Labble?
None.
Mr. Pickens, and I haven't either.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'm prepared to make a motion on item E, is to award the, uh, bid to Human Resources Development from Palaca, Florida, for, uh, probation supervision services.
Second. I'll second. Feature to it.
Okay, we have a proper first and two seconds. And, uh, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, again, unanimous. Uh, any discussion? We've had enough, I suppose.
They were enough.
Motion moves. All right. We will now move to Mr. Tim Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I also did want to commend your staff and all of the constitutional officers that worked with them during this budget presentation, and as I look out here at Mr. Hotelling and I think about comments that were made over several years, and I really do think, as he indicated, that the direction of this county is going in now is positive. I think that our time for some expansion and prosperity is here, and a big part of that starts with a commission that is leading the way, and so I wanted to commend all of you and thank you and your staff. As your comptroller and finance director, you know, I have a part in those discussions, and I think the presentation last week that Matt put together has been well received in the county. I know that that presentation is available on the YouTube channel if anybody wants to read it, and so that openness and transparency and progress is certainly being made and demonstrated, and I want to thank all of you for your efforts in making that happen. Thank you, sir, that's all I have.
Thank you.
Mr. Smith, I'd like to congratulate you and your staff on the integrity and wisdom and experience you bring to this table to make our success possible.
Yeah, it's a, it's a very collective effort to get where we are today. All right. I think what we're going to do now, as we do have quite a few public hearings here, we're going to take a three-minute recess and we'll be back.
Uh, the county's also adopted a local, uh, fair housing ordinance which covers these same, uh, same requirements. Uh, what is prohibited under the Fair Housing Act? In the sale and rental of housing, no one may take any of the following actions based on race, color, national origin, religion, sex, familial status, or handicap. To refuse to rent or sell housing, to refuse to negotiate for housing, to make housing unavailable, to deny a dwelling, to set different terms, conditions, or privileges for the sale or rental of a dwelling, to provide different housing services or facilities, to falsely deny that housing is available for inspection, sale, or rental, or profit to persuade owners to sell or rent, or to deny anyone access to or membership to a facility or service related to the sale or rental of housing. Mortgage lending, no one may take any of the following actions based on the following classes: race, color, national origin, religion, sex, familial status, or handicap. To refuse to make a mortgage loan, to refuse to provide information regarding loans, to impose different terms or conditions on a loan such as different interest rates, points, or fees, to discriminate in property prizing, to refuse to purchase a loan or set different terms or conditions for purchasing a loan. In addition, it is illegal for anyone to threaten, coerce, intimidate, or interfere with anyone exercising a fair housing right or assisting others with exercising those rights. It is also illegal to advertise or make any statements that indicate a limitation or preference based on race, color, national origin, religion, sex, familial status, or handicap. This prohib- prohibition against discriminatory advertising applies to single-family and owner-occupied housing that is otherwise exempt from the Fair Housing Act. There are also additional protections if someone has a disability, including a physical or mental disability, including, uh, hearing, mobility, visual impairments, chronic alcoholism, chronic mental illness, AIDS, AIDS-related conflicts, and mental retardation that susta- substantially limits one or more late major life activities, uh, or to have a record of such a disability, or to be regarded as having such a disability. Uh, again, these are covered by the federal Fair Housing Ri- uh, Fair Housing Act, uh, also by state statute, and also by a local county ordinance. Uh, the county maintains some contact information on the website, uh, if an individual feels that they've been discriminated against and would like to make a complaint, uh, they can also contact the, uh, regional HUD office and file a complaint as well. Again, these actions are illegal, and, uh, as such, uh, anyone found out of compliance could be subject to fines or even jail time. Thank you very much. That would conclude the, uh, Fair Housing presentation.
That was a great workshop, Scott. We appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. I'd like to.
We'll write those workshops.
That was wonderful.
We're gonna need a few more of them.
Hang around, Scott.
Just trying to cover all the bases there.
Well, you covered, you did well.
Uh, any comments?
Mr. Chairman, you can also invite public comment on this matter?
Okay.
None up here? Okay, any public comment for or against? Seeing none, I'll close that portion.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, if I could, uh, on behalf of Scott, we have to hold a second public hearing just like we did here this morning. It has to be conducted prior to August tenth for their deadline of August eleventh, I believe it is. Is that correct, Scott?
Well, the, the next item on the agenda is gonna be the first public hearing. Uh, I have, I have two items today.
I'm one step ahead of ya. My bad.
Uh, I, in addition to the Fair Housing Workshop, I also have a public hearing that's related to the grant application itself.
Okay. When we get through the public hearing, sir, I'll bring this comment back up.
Yes, sir. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Scott.
And, and there is no action required on the first matter?
Right.
Right.
Okay, so you have item B now.
Yes, sir, I do. Thank you, Commissioner Goddard. Uh, this is the first of two public hearings that are required for the county to apply for a community development block grant. Uh, these grants are federal funds that the state receives, uh, every year, uh, through a competitive application process. They reallocate the funds to small counties and cities in the state of Florida. Um, it's around twenty-eight to thirty million dollars that are, uh, that you'll be competing for. Uh, in the past, we've done these, uh, done these grants. I think most of y'all are familiar with the way that they work. Uh, then, there are three national objectives that must be met by community development block grant activity, uh, that being that it benefit low-to-modern-income individuals, uh, that it eliminates slum or blight, or that it address some other community, urgent community development need. In the state of Florida, the funds are primarily used for projects that benefit low and modern-income, uh, households. Uh, this is the first public hearing. There will be a second public hearing, uh, to be held that, uh, will come back with a draft of the act- actual application and, and, uh, discuss a little more about the specifics of the program. Uh, as I mentioned, this is a seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar grant. Uh, the county can only have one grant open at a time, so if you apply for one and it's awarded, uh, you can't apply for another one until you've completed the activities that you specified in the first application. Uh, communities are scored and ranked against other communities submitting in the same category, and you have the opportunity to apply for a housing rehabilitation grant which provides, uh, health, safety, or code, uh, improvements for owner-occupied, low-income homes in the county. So it'd have to be, uh, someone who resides within the, in Putnam County, obviously. Has to be an owner-occupied structure, so no rental properties are eligible, and, uh, the person applying also has to be below eighty percent of the area median income for their household size. Uh, and that varies depending on whether they have one person or eight people living in the home. Um, the county also has the opportunity to apply for a neighborhood revitalization program. That is an infrastructure project, uh, that would benefit a low-to-modern-income neighborhood. Uh, we've talked with staff about trying to develop an application through that, under that category, and I know it's been the, the interest of the, uh, of the board to possibly pursue that. Uh, we've had a difficult time identifying an area that is the fifty-one percent low-to-modern income and then also has the correct densities that we would need, uh, for that type of project. So we've had a difficult time identifying, uh, or developing an application for an infrastructure project. I know, uh, I think street repaving has come up in the past, and we just, we haven't been able to identify a project that would, that would be eligible, uh, for this grant. Uh, the county also has the ability to apply for a commercial revitalization grant. Uh, the county, uh, doesn't meet the, um, as, as I said, it has to be fifty-one percent low-to-modern income. That would be, uh, for the county as a whole, uh, and the county doesn't have at least fifty-one percent of your households are low-to-modern income. So a commercial revitalization grant, uh, is not, is not, uh, an eligible activity. Uh, there is also a special category of grant, uh, that we've looked into pursuing with the county in the past. Um, it's an economic development category. Uh, that would require a participating business, uh, if a, either a business wanted to locate in the county, or an existing business wanted to expand, and they needed, uh, infrastructure to support their expansion or new business. This grant, uh, provides up to one-point-five million dollars, uh, for infrastructure. Whenever we do a first public hearing, we recommend that if a business were to present themselves in the next, in the next year, uh, you would be in a position to apply for, for those funds as well. Uh, so what I'm looking for, uh, from the commission today is, uh, permission to proceed with a regular category grant in whatever category you choose, and then also to proceed with an economic development category grant should a participating business present themselves, uh, before the next grant cycle occurs. Thank you.
Do you need that in the form of a motion, Mr. Chairman, or?
Um, a- actually, this is the first of, of two public hearings, so you, you need to have a second, correct?
Well, uh, during this public hearing, I'd need a motion to select a regular category grant and a economic development category grant.
Okay, okay. So yes, that would be appropriate, um, after, um, public input, uh, on this matter.
Okay, all right. So, do we have any public comment for or against? Uh, seeing none, I'll close that portion.
Mr. Chairman?
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Do we have a?
I, I made the motion.
Okay, so you have a motion on the floor.
Yeah, as, as he requested.
That's, okay. Do we have a proper second?
We do.
Okay, so we have a proper first and a proper second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay, uh, that's unanimous, and any discussion?
Second motion that I'm prepared to bring forward to proceed with the FFY two thousand seventeen Community Development Block Grant in the Economic Development Category. Um, is that right? That's the second one you're looking for?
Yes, sir. That's correct.
Okay, do we have a proper first and a proper second? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay, again, unanimous? Uh, any, any discussion?
Scott, we'll see you again soon.
Thank you all, and I will proceed with the development of an application, and I'll be back before, uh, August thirteenth. Uh, I guess we'll need to schedule a special hearing, uh, for that, for that meeting.
Okay, and we do want to tell you thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you all. Appreciate it.
Appreciate you.
Uh, one, one issue, I, it's not a, a concern right now. You're, you have what's called a Citizen Advisory Task Force, um, and it's a group of five individuals that have been appointed by the commission. Most of those individuals I have been unable to get in contact with. I don't know if they still want to participate. Uh, usually, we would meet with them and get their input on a grant application, and I, I've not been successful. That's one of the reasons I'm coming to you a little late in the application process. I haven't, I haven't been able to get a quorum or get enough. I've actually only been able to speak with one, one of the members, um, so if this application is not successful, I, I'll probably be back before you to ask them to maybe look at the makeup of that group and maybe appoint some new individuals that want to participate.
Mr. Chairman, if I can, um, Mrs. Gabrielle, can we, uh, check into that committee and see what we need to do there to get it more responsive? Thank you.
Thank you all, I appreciate it.
Mr. Chairman, Scott, could you?
I'll have a good morning.
Scott, could you leave a business card with, or your contact information? You have one, 'cause I have some questions I wanna ask you later on.
While we're doing that, Commissioners, uh, that was the reason I was bringing the comments up earlier. I'm gonna have to get with you folks, 'cause we're gonna have to schedule a special, uh, commission meeting, uh, for public hearing, 'cause our next commission meeting's on until August fourteenth. Scott's dead, Mr. Moeset's, uh, deadline is the thirteenth, so we're gonna need to advertise, or, uh, Mr. Moeset will advertise, it's a six-day window for the advertisement. I'll, I'll send out an email for us to look at our calendars and see when, so when we might be able to hold a, uh, a, a special meeting to conduct that public hearing prior to, uh, his deadline.
Very brief.
Five minutes.
Will that also be a five oh five?
Uh, that can be anytime during the day. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you. All right, so we're now, it's down to good. It was ten o'clock certain. Mr. Brown?
Good, uh, good morning, uh, Commissioner and Board of County Commissioners, or Chairman and Court Board of County Commissioners, uh, Mike Brown, Planning and Development Services. Uh, the first project we have today, um, is PUD eighteen oh oh one. It's a rezoning. This is an amendment to the FPL Horizon Project, which is located on the, uh, west end of the county, straddling Putnam and, and Alachua County. Uh, the applicant is Florida Power and Light, and again, as I indicated, this is an amendment to the existing PUD to allow for the placement of operations building within the PUD. Um, there's a general location of the project. Uh, just a brief history, um, in November of twenty sixteen, the Board of County Commissioners approved, uh, PUD for two-hundred-and-seventy-plus-minus acres in ordinance twenty sixteen dash twenty-three for the, uh, for a seventy-four-point-five-megawatt photovoltaic solar facility known as Horizon Project. Uh, as you recall, um, originally, the, the, uh, proposal was for the project to be non-manned. Um, this amendment is to allow for the location of a modular operations buildings within the boundaries of the PUD, which actually, um, is a good thing, 'cause it allows, uh, a couple employees to be working, um, at this location. Uh, the future land use designation is A two, um, on the adopted fu- future land use map, and the zoning is planned unit development. Uh, here's a overview of the future land use map. Here's an aerial, uh, showing the location of the parcel where the, um, operations buil- structure will be, uh, placed up in the northeast corner. Here's a closer look at that parcel. Um, one of the things we always look at for all these rezonings is consistency with the comp plan. Um, just a quick overview, um, the comprehensive plan does allow, um, passive energy generation projects, including solar and wind, and agricultural to future land use with approval of PUD. Um, PUD, in the comp plan, PUDs are allowed in any future land use designation, as long as it's consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the comp plan, meets the, any criteria in the Land Development Code, and the PUD does not increase the intensity or density of uses of the underlying land use category. Um, in addition, um, policy A one seven four allows electric substations in all future land use categories, except for conservation. Uh, staff has looked at, um, well, at least for consistency purposes, the subject property is Ag two, uh, passive energy, s- solar facilities included are allowed in, with PUDs in Ag two. Uh, the proposed amendment will not increase or in the intensity or density of uses over that, what is allowed in Ag two, in the Ag two land use category. Uh, and the operations building is located on a site that was formerly utilized as a mobile home. Um, different structure, new, a new structure, but i- in the same location. Um, and the existing PUD requires a minimum of twenty-five-foot sec bat between development and any wetlands on-site, and this requirement will remain and apply to the new operations facility. Um, there are criteria set forth in the Land Development Code, uh, for all rezoning applications. Uh, by adoption of, of ordinance twenty sixteen twenty-three, uh, the Board of County Commissioners has determined that a PUD is justified, uh, for this, for the, um, as a solar facility at this location. Uh, there are eight criteria that's also provided in a P, in, in the Land Development Code for, that the PUD must meet. Uh, staff has reviewed all those, all eight of them against the proposed change, and we find that, um, the change will, to allow a modular operations building, um, is allowable as an accessory use for the existing solar generation facility. Uh, the location of the building is compatible with the terrain and existing uses in, in the PUD and the surrounding area. There's no residential development associated with the project. Proposed amendment will not result in reduction of usable open space. Uh, there is no increase in the likelihood of flooding or erosion resulting from this amended, uh, change, and the adequate, and there are adequate facilities, transportation, and, and wa- well and septic to support the operations building. Um, with this change, there will be some changes to the, uh, PUD development agreement. Um, these, there, I'll go over each of them. They're highlighted in red. Um, we will add to section three-point-three-one, operations building as an allowable use. Um, we will also add as a accessory use, um, container storage, and, uh, we'll add that the modular operations building will be served by septic system permitted by the Department of Health. With that, staff finds that the proposed use, uh, of a modular operation structure is consistent with the future land use designation, is compatible with the existing land uses in the area, is consistent with the requirements of PUD rezoning, and consistent with the comprehensive plan, goals, objectives, and policies. On June thirteenth, the Planning Commission reviewed the proposed change and unanimously recommended to the Board approval of the amendment to the FPL Horizon Solar Facility P, Planned Unit Development. Staff recommends approval of the request to amend the existing PUD zoning for the, for this area, for this site, um, to develop, allow the development of a modular operations building within the boundaries of the Florida Power and Light Company Horizon seventy-four-point-five-megawatt photovoltaic, photovoltaic solar facility, PUD development, and to include the proposed changes that I've outlined, uh, to the PUD agreement. Are there any questions of staff?
I have none.
Mr. Chairman, before going forward, I would, um, point out that this is, uh, quasi-judicial in nature, and ask each, um, of you to, uh, indicate whether you've had any ex parte communications on the subject, and if so, if any of those, uh, communications would limit your ability to be impartial in your decision-making today based upon, um, what's presented in the hearing.
Okay, Mr. Lobble?
I've had none.
Mr. Pickens?
I just spoke with, um, two members of the Planning Commission, and it did not affect my decision at all.
Mr. Turner?
I did have a conversation with a person, but it did not affect my decision one way or the other.
Okay, Mr. Harvey?
No, I have not.
Okay, none have had none.
Thank you.
Okay, all right. Do we have any public comment for or against? Seeing none, I'll close that section.
You might wanna invite the applicant, too.
Okay.
Oh, they wanna speak? Okay.
I get paid to do that.
Hi, Jeff West, uh, three oh three Hastings Road, St. Augustine. I am the project manager for the Horizon Solar Project. Um, basically here to answer any questions, also to give you a little bit of, uh, a history into the, the operations building. When we first came to you over a year ago for approval of the solar facility, uh, we applied for, as an unmanned facility. Um, now that we have, uh, additional facility coral farms, Horizon, we saw the need to employ two full-time engineers at that site. Uh, the Horizon facility was a perfect location, 'cause there was an existing building there, a mobile home, so we replaced it with a, a slightly larger modular office, so we went from nine-hundred-and-sixty-six square feet to, uh, twelve-hundred-and-eighty-eight square feet, which were, triggers the, the minor amendment. And I wanna, I wanna thank staff for working with us on that during the construction of the process. We were able to get a temporary occupa- occupancy permit for that facility, so we could put it in during construction pending approval by the Board of County Commissioners. Uh, we did, uh, meet with the Planning Commission back in April. We had one comment from a neighbor who wanted us to, to move, uh, one of the Conex containers, which are air-conditioned units where we store our inverter parts, um, and so I went back out into the field on the site with him and about fifteen other neighbors, uh, that he had invited, and we discussed where to move the Conex container, so it was not, you know, posing an impact, a visual impact to, to, to him across the street. And we also agreed to paint that, that Conex container a more brown camouflage color, so it now sits be- behind the other one, behind two oak trees, um, and is painted. So I, I, I've talked to that neighbor. He's since, uh, very pleased with, with us, as well as the other neighbors. I just wanted to add that.
Thank you.
Hey, Mr. Chairman?
Okay, appreciate it.
Are you going?
Yeah, doesn't matter. Mr. Chairman, in regards to case number eighteen dash oh oh one, uh, being found compliant by the, uh, Planning Commission and staff, and, uh, Planning Commission recommending approval, I also, uh, moved to, uh, move this case forward.
Second. Okay, so we have a proper first and a proper second. All those in favor say aye?
Uh, aye.
Again, unanimous? Any questions? Any discussion? Okay, it's closed.
All right, Mr. Chairman, um, next project, also an FPL project, PUD eighteen oh oh five, Twin Lakes Solar Energy Center. Uh, as I indicated, the applicant is Florida Power and Light Company, um, Agent Peter King. Uh, this is a rezoning of eight-hundred-and-fifty-eight-plus-minus acres from agriculture, from agriculture to planned unit development. Uh, the purpose of the request is to facilitate the development of a seventy-four-point-five-megawatt photovoltaic solar facility. It's our third one in the county. Um, the location is, uh, south of State Road twenty-one and, or twenty, in the Hollister area of the county, uh, east of Interlock. And here's a location map showing, um, the general location of the project. Uh, just quickly going over, um, the project information, uh, this is like the other two projects that FPL has done. Um, a photovoltaic solar panels will convert sunlight into electricus- electricity, which will be distributed, uh, to an onsite substation and then onto the grid, uh, for use. The facility will be unmanned when in operation. Uh, the project site is undeveloped, um, you, and has been used for agricultural purposes. The future land use designation is Ag two on the future land use map, and the zoning, as I indicated earlier, is Ag. Here is the, um, shows the future land use. Um, you do, we do have some conservation adjacent to it, and some rural residential not far from the project site. Existing zoning is Ag with some R two to the extreme northwest corner of the project site. Uh, here's what the proposed zoning would look like, and a general conceptual plan. Uh, just point out that, um, there are, there's a significant wetlands area in the northeast quadrant, which will be, uh, the wetlands will be protected up in that area. Um, again, we look at comp plan consistency, uh, the same policies as I presented in the previous, um, public hearing with, um, are, um, are in place. Um, our comp plan allows solar facilities in, um, with approval of PUD and an Ag two future land use. Um, and the comp plan also allows new electric substations in all future land use categories, except in the conservation. Um, staff finds that the subject property is located on land designated Ag two on the future land use map, and Ag two allows for solar generation projects with PUD approval. Um, uh, the proposed PUD zoning is allowed in the A two future land use category, and the proposed PUD will not increase the intensity or density of uses over that, what is, would be allowed in the Ag two future land use category. Staff finds that the proposed solar facility is consistent with the land use designation. Again, there are criteria set forth in the Land Development Code, uh, for all PUDs to present evidence that the rezoning is justified. Uh, staff finds that the proposed solar facility is unique and does not fit with any of the, within any of the existing zoning districts. Um, the Ag two future land use category allows passive energy, energy generation projects with PUD zoning. Uh, staff finds that the application, the application provides evidence that rezoning to PUD for this project in this area at this location is justified. There are, as a, there are eight criteria, um, I'll quickly go over each one. Um, the density or intensity of character of development of the project is consistent with the comp plan. Um, we've already, uh, in response to the previous criteria, um, we found that, um, the PUD is consistent and allowed for a solar facility is allowed within Ag two future land use. Um, the, the use of the proposed PUD is compatible with the terrain and existing planned uses of projects surrounding the PUD. Uh, the proposed solar facility is low-impact that uses, um, and that is compatible with the surrounding agricultural uses. Solar panels do not pursue, produce any sound, and the project will produce no odors or other nuisances. Once construction is completed, the only traffic will be from the maintenance personnel. Um, next criteria is residential density. There is no residential development associated with this project. Next criteria, uh, usable, usable open spaces and recreational areas provided within the PUD is consistent with the policies of the comp plan, and also addresses protection and conservation of, of sensitive environmental areas. This project is a little different than the other two projects that FPL has done. Um, there will be some minor wetland impacts associated with this project. Those impacts will be permitted, uh, by, uh, St. John's Water Management District and mitigated for. Uh, all, um, the wetlands that are not impacted, there will be a twenty-five-foot buffer, uh, from all improvements and structures on-site. The next criteria, site of, of the PUD must be suitable for use in a manner proposed without hazards to persons either on or off the site of likelihood of increased flooding, erosion, or other dangers. Uh, the project has been designed and developed in accordance with the stormwater permit from Florida Department of Environmental Protection, which will protect adjacent properties from flooding and erosion. The next criteria, all users permitted in the P, uh, in the PUD shall have access to public streets, either directly or by way of private road. The project site will be accessed by a single entrance off of Clouds Avenue, uh, and again, this facility will be unmanned, so there will, the project will generate limited traffic once development is completed. Uh, next criteria, sufficient off-street and on-street parking. Uh, there's no need for- There's no need for, for on-street parking resulting from the project. During construction, the, and during the construction phase and deliveries, the construction personnel will park within the project boundary. The last criteria, utilities and essential public services, not, including but not limited to sanitary sewer, potable water, fire, solid waste, and other services must be available and have capacity to serve the development. Again, the facility will be unmanned, and there's no need for utilities or essential public services. During construction, there will be temporary sanitary services provided for those construction workers. With all PUDs, there's an agreement, and I'll just go over the highlights of that PUD agreement. You have a full copy in your packet. Project will be developed in a single phase with development required to begin within twenty-four months, should the Board of County Commissioners adopt the ordinance today. The project will be developed consistent with the conceptual, conceptual site layout, which is part of the agreement, and I've provided, I showed you earlier. Clouds Avenue from the project entrance to rodeo drive, rodeo drive from Clouds Avenue to Old Woods Road, and Old Woods Road from rodeo drive to Old Gainesville Highway will be brought up, back up to pre-construction conditions within eight, eight months after the construction is completed. This is a comparable condition to what you saw in both the previous two solar projects that FPL has brought forward. Access drive and internal circulation shall be approved by emergency services and public works for compliance with access requirements for emergency vehicles. And again, twenty-five-foot native vegetative buffer around the non-impacted wetlands, and any lighting at the substation shall comply with Section seven oh-nine of the Putnam County Land Development Code. All of these are pretty consistent with ones you've seen in the previous two. With that, staff finds that the applicant has presented evidence that the rezoning to a PUD is justified. The proposed rezoning and development is consistent with the future land use designation. The proposed project is compatible with the existing land uses in the area. The development is consistent with the requirements for PUD zoning and consistent with other comp plan goals, objectives, and policies. On June thirteenth, the twenty eighteen, the Planning Commission reviews the proposed PUD and unanimously recommended approval of the FPL Twin Lakes PUD. Staff recommends approval of the request to rezone eight hundred and fifty-eight plus acres of land from agriculture to planned unit development, subject to inclusion, inclusion of the Florida Power and Light Company Twin Lakes Solar Energy Center PUD Development Agreement. Any questions of staff?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I have. Mr. Brown, on your summary highlights, you have south of State Road twenty and west of the town. That should be east of the town.
East of the town, I apologize.
I just wanted to clarify that. And then, Mr. Chairman, I have a question when FPL comes up to the table.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, before moving forward, again, this is a quasi-judicial hearing in nature and asks any ex parte communications be expressed now and indicate whether or not those affect your ability to be impartial in making your decision based upon the evidence presented in the hearing today.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Turner.
I had a conversation, but it will not affect my decision.
Okay.
I had a conversation, and it won't affect my decision either.
I had a conversation with two members of the Planning Commission, but it will not affect my decision.
I've had none.
Okay, and I've had none.
Thank you.
Okay, would the applicant like to come speak?
Good morning, Mr. Chair Commissioners. My name's Jim Bush, three oh-three Hastings Road, St. Augustine. I'm a local manager for FPL, and joining me is Krista Hendricks from FPL Solar Development Group. We'd just like to say how excited we are to have partnered with the county on our previous projects, which have helped make Putnam County a renewable energy leader, and we're thrilled to be bringing another great project to the county, which we feel will be an extension of energy-grade projects that we've already had in the county. Now, I know that you've seen our formal presentation several times. You're probably the most knowledgeable county commissioner in the state when it comes to solar, so we weren't planning on going through a formal presentation. We do have one. We also have a one-minute video, which shows a rendition of the site that we could show you if you're interested in seeing that. Otherwise, we're just happy to answer any questions you have about our project.
I have one.
Yes, sir. Go ahead, Mr. Turner.
Are we still going to be the number one solar in the state of Florida, the number one solar capital of Florida?
This is moving in the right direction for that.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Well, I think we were before. Did somebody catch us?
DeSoto County, I believe, is close as well.
Oh, no. You let somebody take us over.
It's neck and neck with DeSoto County.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I got, my questions were when construction is going to begin, and that's going to begin within twenty-four months of the approval. And one other question, I guess, and I kind of answered it a little bit. We just paved some of those roads out there to the site, and my understanding is you're going to put the road back the way it was, okay? So we're good, because we'll get that complaint. That's in your district, Mr. Chairman. And how will the power go out to Highway twenty? It's going to go out to that substation out there by Queens?
Okay, so for the record, I'm Krista Hendricks. I'm with the Solar Development Group. My address is seven, seven hundred Universe Boulevard, Juneau Beach. To answer your question, we will be connecting to an existing one fifteen KV line off State Road twenty. It will not go through the substation I believe you're referring to on State Road twenty. It will be a tap into the existing line.
Okay, good. And I just want to make a comment. Thank God we got so much sunlight out in the west Putnam area. Florida Power and Light's excited about that, isn't it, Commissioners? Y'all have more sunlight in God's country, you might get one too.
And I say, it is what it is. Could be our land's just worth a lot more.
Oh. All right, let's move this along. Any other comments? Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman, if no, if no other questions, or we don't need to do anything, I propose make a motion?
We need public input, please.
Oh, public.
All right, any public comment for or against? Okay, seeing none, we'll close that portion, and we'll move to a...
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of the request to amend the zoning map agricultural AG to planned unit development for the eight hundred and fifty-eight acres on the PUD eighteen dash zero zero five.
I'll second it.
So we have a proper first and a proper second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Again unanimous. Any questions? Discussion?
I just have a comment, is, I just want to thank Jim and Peter, I believe it is. Just the way y'all have been a great corporate citizen for Putnam County with the previous two projects, and I'm sure this one will continue, of what you put to the, to the table for us with helping with resurfacing or, or bringing the roads back to where they were before you, before you started the project. I just want to thank you for, for dealing the way y'all have been. It's been great. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to make one comment. Putnam County powering Florida.
There you go.
There you go.
There you go.
Get it before DeSoto.
Is this going to get us ahead of DeSoto, this new project, or? Now, now we're in full competition now.
Okay, so we will, that closes that portion and moves to case number R eighteen dash zero zero six.
This is a rezoning of a parcel. The applicant, applicants are Austin Strickland, Morgan Strickland, and Neil Strickland. Again, this is a change, a zoning change from commercial retail C-two to commercial general C-three on zero point six-six acre parcel. The property is located at one five one Highway seventeen in East Palaca. That is the corner of US Highway seventeen and Walton Road. The aerial is showing the general location of, of the parcel. Future land use is commercial with urban service just to the rear of it. Existing current zoning is C-two, and, oops. The proposed zoning would be C-three. Policy A-one-nine-three-A-five of the comprehensive plan states that the commercial future land use category consists of areas intent to serve as primarily commercial locations, and these locations, these areas are located close proximity to concentrations of populations and have good access to arterial, arterial and collector roads. Further, that policy goes on to direct commercial uses to nodal areas or large and contiguous commercial districts and appropriate commercial infill locations. The Land Development Code identifies commercial general C-three as an area to provide general commercial zoning with, for a mixture of light and medium intensity commercial uses that require immediate access to major or minor arterials, roadways, and do not result in a lot of traffic pass, passing through existing neighborhoods. Staff finds that the future land use is commercial, and the proposed C-three zoning is consistent with the future land use designation. The subject parcel has frontage on US seventeen, which is identified as a principal arterial in the comprehensive plan. County has adopted level of surface D for US Highway seventeen in this area. Review of the PM peak hour volume to capacity ratio for this facility is, is at zero point one six, which means that US seventeen is operating at acceptable level of service. The, the parcel is served by county water and sewer, and there's adequate capacity of both to support any development on this site. There are no wetlands or floodplains on the site, and the proposed use is accessible to the intended market area and does not require significant non-residential vehicular traffic to pass through established neighborhoods. Staff finds that the proposed rezoning to C-three is consistent with the comp plan, is consistent with the locational requirements for C-three zoning, compatible with, is compatible with the surrounding uses. The Planning Commission, at its June thirteenth, twenty eighteen meeting, recommended approval of the proposed rezoning. Staff recommends approval of the request to amend the zoning map from commercial retail C-two to commercial general C-three for the subject parcel. Any questions of staff?
Okay. Counselor?
Same comment. Ex parte communications, please.
I had none.
I spoke with two members of the Planning Commission, and it won't affect my decision.
I've had none.
None.
And I've had none. Thank you. You're welcome. Okay, is the applicant present? I wish you know you hear this, your name and your address.
Karen Strickland, and at six forty-one.
Get a little closer. Yeah.
I'm Karen Strickland at six forty-one East Road, East State Road one hundred in San Mateo. And I'm with Neil Strickland Roofing. We're adjacent to the property is our building, but my husband and two sons are joint owners of the piece of property in question. I'm here to represent them.
Okay.
My son is actually the applicant, and he is on vacation.
All right, is there any questions?
I have none.
I have none.
Okay, all right. Any public comment for or against? Seeing none, we'll close that. Okay, thank you. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, with regards to case R eighteen oh-oh-six, I finding it to be compliant by the Planning Commission and recommended by the Planning Commission, I move that we move, I have proposed that we move it forward.
Second. Okay, we have a proper first and a proper second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Again unanimous. Any discussion or comments? Seeing none, we'll move to case number R eighteen dash zero zero seven.
Thank you. Ed Preston, Planning and Development.
Ed, can you make it a little bit more livelier than Mr. Brown did? Just teasing.
He's got that towering height to work with, you know?
I guess.
The applicants on this application are Kenneth and Diane Schwing. The request is a zoning change from residential to commercial, from R-two to C-two on a point six-two acre parcel. The property is located at two addresses, two oh-five and two oh-seven on Oakwood Avenue in Palaca. Generally, if you go out here to Krill Avenue and go west, it's on your left about half a mile down the road. It's behind a commercial structure that is within the city limits of Palaca. You can see on the general location chart that's shown. The future land use in the area is urban reserve, and you may recall that the main difference between urban reserve and urban service is that urban reserve does not yet have water and sewer services. So we are right on the boundary of where water and sewer services are available. The current zoning for the district is R-two, and it's surrounded by R-two, except where it touches the city of Palaca's limits. There is a commercial two zoning directly northeast of the property. The proposed zoning district is to take it to C-two, so you can see how that would show up. We would like to look at the comprehensive plan, as Mr. Brown has said. The urban reserve category does include things for commercial two, so it would be consistent with that commercial two zoning. The existing zoning, the purpose of residential is listed here, and it has been used in the past as residential. There were some mobile homes on the site. What is proposed, the C-two zoning district, the purpose is to provide a commercial zoning district for light commercial land use in those future land use categories, including commercial, urban reserve. So we have two lists, I think I can go up and down on this, of items that are allowed uses in this new commercial two zoning, and they are numbered one through thirteen on this page, and you can see that there are retail sales in there and services and offices that are listed explicitly as allowed uses in this new commercial two zoning district, along with the second page, fourteen, and then three, six items under special use permits that all can locate at any point in the future on this piece of property. So our consistency with the comprehensive plan, one more time, this category of commercials called neighborhood commercial and community commercial, they're permitted. The site location standards are listed in A-one-nine-three-A-five, paragraph C, under the commuter, commercial future land use category. What will be discouraged from locating is locating along a strip, along a roadway. This is not in a strip along a roadway. There is not, we are not exceeding that twenty percent threshold that's listed in the comprehensive plan, and the site development standards are subject to further regulation in terms of setbacks and other items like that. So our analysis was, the proposed C-two use is allowed in this future land use category. The parcel has direct access to paved residential streets, and it is one block from a major arterial, that being Krill, and the request places the commercial next to residential, but it is contiguous to an existing commercial district inside the city, and it will require the applicant to provide a ten-foot-wide vegetative buffer and a six-foot-high fence, according to the Land Development Code. So we find that the proposed zoning is consistent with the comprehensive plan, consistent with local, locational requirements, compatible with the surrounding land uses. The Planning Commission, again on June thirteenth, recommended approval of this, and staff recommends approval of the request to amend the zoning map from residential two to commercial two for this parcel. I'm ready for any questions. I will change that. I will ask for any questions.
Any questions?
I could.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Preston, what will the requirements for utilities, sewer and water?
They'll have to get approved by the county health department for well and septic.
Okay, so it will be served by well and septic. But could be annexed to receive sewer water, and, I mean, water and sewer from the city?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Or, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Or the city could provide services without being annexed, whatever they wanted to do at that moment.
I believe that they have a policy that if they... I believe that they have a policy that if they provide water and sewer, that they do annex, though. They may also have a policy that they have a different price for out of the city limits for water and sewer. They do.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any comments, Mr. Turner?
Those are welcome.
Counselor?
Again, as a rezoning ordinance, this is quasi-judicial in nature. I'd ask each of you to express any ex parte communications you've had, and indicate whether those would impact your ability to make an impartial decision today based upon the evidence presented during this hearing.
Mr. Lible.
I've had none.
Mr. Pickens?
I spoke with two members of the Planning Commission, and it will not affect my decision.
Mr. Harvey?
I got an email yesterday afternoon from a couple asking me to reject this, but it will not affect my decision.
I've had none that I'm aware of.
Okay, yeah, I believe...
Mr. Chairman, if I could, I received the same email probably as Mr. Harvey.
Yes.
For record, but I didn't speak to anybody.
No.
Well, that would be a communication.
Okay, well, I did not communicate back, but did receive an email.
And I did receive an email.
You received the same email?
I believe so.
Okay, good.
Okay, is the applicant here? And would they like to speak? Okay, all right, any public comment for or against? Seeing none, I'll close that portion, and we'll move for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we approve R18-007 zoning map amendment from R2 to commercial retail C2.
I'll second it.
Have a proper first and a proper second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous? See, that should, that will now close our public hearings. And now, we will also, do I? Reconvene.
We need to give him a little pad for that.
Yeah, it's...
Yes, sir. It's got a mind of its own. All right, um, okay, appointments?
Like a sledgehammer.
I apologize for hitting it that hard. Okay, any appointments? I'll start with Mr. Turner.
No, sir, I have none today.
Okay, Mr. Harvey?
No, sir, I have none.
I have, I have none.
Okay, well, I do have on the fishing fund, gonna appoint Fred Kotshott.
Can you spell that?
F-R-E-D. C-O-T-S-H-O-T-T.
He has served before.
Yes.
Yeah.
And he's very eager to be back on.
Good, good man.
Okay, and that's...
Mr. Chairman, just for, just for the conversation of it, I think Ms. Stella has a, some library members, there's just not one from my committee that she would like perhaps y'all to look at today and appoint them if you were so desired.
Thank you, Mr. Turner.
She just doesn't have one from my committee, or my district yet.
Mr. Chairman, I have not had time to, to interview Ms. Lee, so I'll save mine for another day.
Okay.
Okay.
All of you may feel like that, but I felt like she wanted to...
No, I appreciate it.
Stella Brown, putting a kind of interim director. Um, I met with Bets and Drickers on yesterday. They have three appointments by the city of Palaca, one they were submitting to the Commissioners last night, which was Stephen Crowley, the previous library director. And Swetlak said that she would continue on the board, and we had another one that was already on the board. I'm not sure if the appointments, because she submitted Andrew Burnett a couple of months ago, and I never heard anything back, and I met with her again yesterday, and she didn't mention anything whether he had actually been appointed or not. But she did submit his name a couple of months ago. As far as the other district areas, we have appointments for all of the areas other than District 1 and District 3. Are we all on the same page here? Because Heather Lee wanted to represent the Merrows area, and it's my understanding that she can't, because she's not in that district, but she can represent District 4. Bill Metz said he was willing to return if it was possible. So this is the information I have, and then Chip Lible, you already had an appointment for your area. So those are the two that were submitted to me via this meeting today. So if you guys want to get with those people, I don't know the proper procedure for how you appoint, who you appoint, but Bill Metz did come forward and say that he was willing to be on the board again, if that was okay.
Okay, I don't...
And I have talked to a couple of people in Mr. Turner's area, not in your area, Mr. Pickens, but in Mr. Turner area, and it's one person that's kind of hesitant, and the other person just was not interested. So we are trying to work with you guys to help find some appointments for those areas.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'll...
I hope you have an appointment next meeting.
And when I send the email, I'll also send the schedule of all the meetings at the same time, to make sure that we're all on the same page.
Good, thank you.
Thank you, Stella.
Thank you.
Ms. Stella, when, when the meeting's over, if we could get together for just a few minutes? Thank you.
Okay. All right, any other appointments? Okay, then we'll move to Mr. Terry Suggs.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. The only real comment this morning from the county administrator is that in your box, Ms. Melissa Dillon had to leave. She wanted me to let you know that she had placed the draft procurement policy manual update in your box. So at your leisure, if you would schedule some appointments with Ms. Dillon and some other folks, we'll, we'll get you some one on ones to go through the policy, so bring you up to speed on that, and then we'll bring it back to you folks either at a workshop prior to a commission meeting for adoption. It's been a, an arduous task, but they've done a good job with it, and I would like to go ahead and get moving on that, maybe bringing it into, at the same time we bring in our, the new fiscal year would be great. So I just want to point that out for her.
Mr. Chairman, I would just like to say, I would like to hear that at workshop before we bring it to a commission, if we could, with it being that important a piece of ordinance.
I think that's a, a, an absolute great idea and expectation, but we would like to, like we did with the budget this year, if we could sit down with each of you one on ones, it's a little easier to go through that manual, because it is rather intense to, that we could have a good open dialogue at the workshop. I think it'd be helpful if we could do that, if, if you can.
Are you going to have Mr. Reynolds give us one of them fancy PowerPoints like he did on the budget? Sure made the budget simpler.
Mr. Reynolds, he's getting all the pub off of that, so I would take it that's the county administrator, that was a good hire, so, yeah, we can, we can work on anything that you folks would like to do to make your lives a lot easier. Absolutely.
Okay, just to clarify, that's going to be at our next workshop, which will actually be in August?
If we can get through the one on ones with you folks, absolutely.
Okay.
The other things I have this morning is none of any importance. I would like to just point out that Mr. Manny spoke here this morning a lot more than I ever have, and no one has questioned that. And also, Commissioner Lible, I understand you're a member of Qantas, but sir, you'd have been fined twice today by Rotary. But anyway, it's been a, it's been a great week. I'm glad we got the budget behind this, and I'm glad we got the mileage rate set lower than what we, we came into. I think you folks, you gave a lot of, a lot of props to staff for all the hard work, but let's, let's be honest, it's the product of you five elected officials having a mission and a vision, and doing the things that we need to do, making tough decisions, that's allowed your staff to get, be in a position to bring a budget with a less, lesser mileage rate, and no use of reserves, and putting money back. So congratulations to you five. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Counselor?
Well, I don't want to, you know, babble on too much, so I guess I won't have anything further.
You've done well today.
Thank you.
I'm, I'll start with Mr. Lible.
Oh, thank you. Quite the time, you've been counting that in a while.
Come on, give me a break.
I appreciate the generosity, but it's kind of the dull drums of summertime right now, and there's not a lot going on. I have nothing to report.
Okay, Mr. Pickens?
I just want to, again, as, thank the Commissioners, and especially Stacy Papel and Matt Reynolds, Administrator Suggs, and all the staff for the hard work on the budget. And, and this is, this is important, this is big. We wanted to come in as a commission this year and, and lower that mileage rate back down, and we're able to do that, and also not use any reserves, and then, and then make an attempt to increase the reserves, and that's what we've done. So I just want to commend staff, and, and thank you for all your hard work.
Mr. Turner?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would also like to not miss another opportunity to thank staff for what they've done, and I've made the comment many times that I've been here, that sometimes it's very difficult to remain focused on the big picture when you have so much going on in the day, such as all the road complaints, the budget complaint, I mean, excuse me, the drainage complaints, all the different things that go on, that everybody has to tend to, including our staff. So, you know, I, I think it's wonderful that they were able to look at the, at the big picture, and you get a budget that was so good, that lowered taxes, that got out of reserves. I think that's a wonderful thing. I know that some of us that, that voted for that last year, for that tax increase last year, we didn't take it very well, and, and I'd like to appreciate the fact that not only did they come in and work, start working immediately to, to drop, to get the budget back in line again, but they also didn't spend some of the money that was budgeted for last year, which is part of the reason why the reserves are growing this year, for was the money, some of the money left from last year that they elected not to spend. So, you know, I, I just wanted to, like I said, never miss an opportunity to, to see where that is, and that we, that, I appreciate the fact that staff is still keeping focused on the big picture, and we're starting to see things like the procurement ordinance and the, and the budget get balanced, and the things that need, that need to happen for Putnam to move in a, in a positive direction. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Harv?
I want to say, well said, Commissioner Turner. I would have said the same thing, and I just concur with him and all of our Commissioners. It's been a pleasure going through this process. I do want to thank the people in Johnson for having a parade last week. It was very cool out there, wasn't it, Commissioner Lible? It was very warm, let me say, and 2:00, and on a Saturday, a parade in Johnson. It was hot. It was brutal, but a lot of people were out there, and a lot of good folks, and we represented the county well. I do want to say, being that I'm out putting signs up, as some of y'all are throughout the county, the county's wet right now. Not just wet, in some areas, at my place, we're about just a few inches away from Hurricane Irma flood stage. There's problems all over. There's places that you think are high and dry until you walk up on the property, and, and it's just flooded. So be patient with us. We realize there's problems out there, but I can tell you that Preston and his crew are working diligently trying to do this. My concern is upcoming hurricane. I tell you, I don't know what we would see when that time comes. If we see eight inches or 10 inches of rain in a weekend, what would happen? I, I think you'll probably see the arc, and I may, I don't want to make light of that. You'll see things we just can't get to. Roads, I was there in your district yesterday, Commissioner Goddard, and behind Francis Baptist Church, the water is going to go over Sea 309C pretty soon. I've never seen that, and I grew up in that area. So just be patient. Mosquitoes are out there. Mr. Cass, I sent you an email the other day about the concern that I have with the Clay County incident up there, and they border us, and be diligent in that area. Citizens need to take precautions, that's the big thing, and I know what we do at our house. So, again, thank you, and it's been a great board meeting today. Thank you, staff, for all your hard work, and Commissioner Goddard, thank you.
You're welcome. Mr. Suggs?
Yes, sir, just one quick reminder, let's not forget, we got the Project Putnam update here Friday morning at 9:00 a.m. with Congressman Yoho.
Yeah, I'm going to, because I have traveled around, my wife and I do enjoy traveling all over Putnam County, and we have reached that point. I've had to go down many, many, many roads in four-wheel drive, and many roads I've also had to turn around, just wasn't going to venture out in there, it was just a little too deep than I wanted to be into. Certain roads are closed, but I will say, Public Works, I, I know he, he hears from every one of us Commissioners on a daily basis, but they're doing a great job of doing what they can with what they've got, also to the point of keeping the, the sides mowed. I know it's growing as fast as it can be, and I'm getting complaints that we're not mowing, but I assure you, we are mowing. Those tractors are out, and they are mowing in the rain. They are mowing. But anyway, just be, be careful out there. Unfortunately, we have had to shut roads down. We have roads that, that ditches, there's nowhere for the water to go. They're not stopped up, they just don't have any place for the water to go, and the water is reaching many points where it is crossing over, over the roads. Well, with that, I thank everyone for being here, and our meeting is adjourned.